Just as we're getting things started, again, my name is Jeff Leatherman. I'll introduce myself here in just a little bit, but our Halloween Fun House here is Friday, October 26th. There's a flyer there on your chair. Feel free to take this with you. This is your free ticket to get into our free event, so feel free to bring this with you, but we'd look forward to having you, grandkids and your kids, out to our Halloween Fun House.
Good evening. I would like to thank you all for coming out this evening. I know that your time is valuable, and please, I want to let you know that one of the things that I love about Roswell the most is that we have so many passionate, caring, articulate, intelligent citizens that are willing to get out on a Thursday night to opine about parks and various other topics. So I welcome you, and I want you to know that we are here to listen to you, and I also want you to know that we've heard you. Big Creek Park is off the table for a tennis facility. We are still working with the Vernon Kraus Foundation to see if there is another piece of property in the city of Roswell, whether it's under private ownership or the possibility of purchase, and that's where we're going with the tennis facility. But I felt quite strongly that because I removed the item from the agenda on the mayor and council meeting, that you perhaps thought, and rightly so, that you lost your voice and we weren't listening. So this meeting today is to replace that, and I really want you to know that we're here to listen. We have taken steps to improve our process, and I feel that we'll have a very successful meeting this evening, and I look forward to hearing from each one of you. Before I go on, I'd like to introduce our council members. We've got Post One, Council Member Marcelo Zapata. If you -- thank you. Post Two is Michael Palermo. Post Three is Council Member Sean Grower. Post Four is Marie Willsey. Post Five is Matthew Tizer, and Post Six is Council Member Judy. And before I go on, council asked me to read a statement to you all, and the reason why they asked me to read a statement, we had long conversations, and they felt very strongly, and I agree, that we are here to listen to you this evening, not for you to listen to us. So this is a comment that council has asked me to read this evening, and I am proud to do it. "Citizens of Roswell and guests, we as your council want to welcome you tonight to this town hall meeting. Each one of your council members are here tonight to hear feedback from the citizens of Roswell on very important matters that will be discussed here tonight. We look forward to the presentation put together by staff and the mayor, and thank them for their time and effort in doing so. Following the presentation, we encourage those here to give feedback, ask questions, and participate in sharing thoughts on the processes and information shared. The main purpose of this meeting is to hear from all of you, so in lieu of each of us speaking and in order to reserve more time for input, we wanted to make this statement for all of the council members. Thank you again for attending, and we look forward to an informational and productive meeting this evening." I would like to applaud the council for making this statement and for being unified in their vision and in their commitment to the city of Roswell. Next, I would like to introduce our REIT Commission, and if you all would, please stand and raise your hands. Deborah Ewing, the Chairperson of the REIT Commission. Tom Pratt, Vice Chairman. Angela Parham. Theo Kaiserling. Lawrence Ketchpole. I don't see Lawrence. Rick Dregger. Thank you, Mr. Dregger. And David Smith. Thank you, sir. The next group of people I'd like to introduce is Roswell Inc. And Roswell Inc., for those of you, it's in your packet, but just as an introduction, Roswell Inc. is our partner in economic development. Steve Stroud, Economic and Business Development. Carissa Turner, Director of Communications and Public Relations. And also, while I would like to recognize Deborah Ewing again, her main hat this evening is a REIT Commission member, but she is also Business Outreach and Development Coordinator for Roswell Inc. As I said before, Big Creek is not on the table this evening. We are here to listen to you, your concerns, any questions that you have, and we want to make sure that everything that we do, it will be recorded on our website, so any questions you have, we'll answer those in a timely manner and make sure those go up on our website. All the materials that you have been given this evening and that you will see in presentations will be on our website as well. So please know that there is much more information out there that we will provide to you, and we are happy to do that, and any other information that you feel as though we aren't providing on that website, please call my office, because we want to make sure that you all get the information you need and the feedback that is required. I would just like to speak a little bit, because we're going to open this up for public comment after our presentation, and I'd just like to speak a little bit on the rules of decorum. It's that these are the same rules that we adhere to in council chambers, so we will ask each person to direct their comments to the mayor and council, the boards, as a whole, and we will answer those questions on the website. We will also ask our residents and our business owners and our speakers to refrain from any personal attacks and, of course, foul or abusive language, and we know that you will be very civil and courteous, and your manners will shine, so I thank you for that as well. Also, I ask the members of the audience to please respect the time of others, and I ask you, please, do not disrupt or disturb or shout out or make noises while other people are speaking. I'm anticipating a lot of speakers this evening, and that will only slow the process down, so I appreciate your help with that. We've got the fire marshals here this evening. I'm sure you've seen them. They are regulating the number of people that we can have in the room with capacity, but please know that they're here to help, and also, if anyone needs assistance, they are here to help as well. And I would also like to thank our police and fire departments, because they are here to serve the public, and we thank them for it, and I, for one, feel very safe. So if you would give them a round of applause, I'd appreciate that. We have a hard stop in the building at 9:30. We need to let our staff go home to their friends and families, so if you would like to stay and talk further after the meeting, we just ask you to do so outside the building so that we can close it up and let our employees go home. And the final thing I would like to say is, in your packet, we have provided you all with a survey, and I would appreciate it very much, and council would appreciate it as well. If you would please fill out that survey and put it in the -- we have, I think, several boxes for the comments, the survey comments, so if you would, please, put those in the box, and then also, we'll get those up on the website in a timely manner. It might take us a little longer than tomorrow morning, but we will get those up soon. At this time, what I would like to go ahead and do is introduce our city administrator, Mr. Gary Palmer. I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to meet Mr. Palmer, but he has been with the city for right at one year now, and we are very excited to have him here. Highly qualified, very professional gentleman, and please give him a hand of applause.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Does everybody have a packet? Because my portion of the PowerPoint is not going to be very readable from where you're at, so I would just ask you to follow along, and I'll queue you when you need to look at which slides. Again, my name is Gary Palmer, and I'm your city administrator. I was appointed to this position about this time last year. The two primary roles in my office are to work with our department heads and executing -- oh, is it not loud enough? Okay. Usually it's the other way around. I was appointed to this position by the city council back on November 1st of last year. The two primary roles in my office are to work with our city departments to ensure proper service delivery and to work with the city council to ensure that their policies and their priorities are pursued. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the timeline for this project and my involvement, but because you don't know me, I want to take a second and give you a little background about me and how I got here. After many years in the Marines, I decided to continue my public service at the local level in Metro Detroit. I worked for several years as a community planner and designer with a large consulting firm and was involved in the development of many capital projects within Michigan and Ohio. I left that firm to work solely for one of my client communities in Metro Detroit, and I stayed there for a little over five years before being hired by a suburb of Knoxville, Tennessee, where I worked there for 11 years as both the Assistant Town Manager and Town Manager. Around this time last year, I saw this great opportunity to be the city administrator for Roswell, and I didn't hesitate. I'm a credentialed city manager through the International City Managers Association. I'm also a certified planner through the American Planning Association. So that's boring, and enough about me. I know you guys want to get to the public comments, so if you refer to your timeline in the packet. So there's a few typical ways that capital projects like this tennis project arise. In a city that has an in-house economic development apartment, the project would typically start there. Roswell Inc. is our economic development arm, so it came up through Roswell Inc. And as you see on your timeline, the first contact looked like it was about this time last year. You can look at the comments and the attendees on the timeline, and I can't speak to those meetings because I wasn't involved, so I'd like to jump to July 16th, and that's the meeting where I first was introduced to this project and first got involved. At that meeting on the 16th, I got to know Mr. Kraus and his story. We all discussed the concept at a very high level. We discussed how we were going to publicly and deliberately roll this project out. We also discussed the need for confidentiality. In my mind, when we're talking about this, it needed to remain confidential, primarily to me, so we don't have another city committing chicken hawk our project. Moreover, the city had some legal hurdles to get over, and we weren't exactly sure how we were going to do that up until about a week before we actually rolled this out. At the end of that meeting, I asked Mr. Kraus and his team to meet with just the city staff so we could talk about the development, the site plan, all the constraints on that, and just look at it from a technical standpoint. That meeting occurred on July 24th, and then right after that meeting, we had another meeting to talk about the logistics of how we were going to announce this publicly. All the elements that were discussed in the July 24th meeting, such as the environmental impact, traffic impact, the wetlands issues, geological surveys, the legal clearances from the state, and the public engagement process, were to be captured and memorialized in a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, which was the instrument to be considered at the August 13th regular meeting of the city council. So onto the MOU, so you can flip the page and go to the MOU sheet where you can see some elements on there. So we realize that the term MOU and that actual instrument looks like a legally binding agreement, and I suppose in some cases, if any agreement meets the elements of a contract, then you could argue that is binding. That is not what happened in this case, and that is not the case here. For this project, that MOU was the starting point for both parties and used to memorialize at that time the next steps in the very lengthy and very public endeavor. There have been rumors that have been circulating that I've heard about this being a surreptitious process, or there was some other plan in mind, and I can tell you that simply wasn't true. We were very excited about the project and got a little ahead of ourselves, but we understand the perception. And I just came from a national conference of city managers, and we talk about these issues there, and I can tell you nationally, a lot of cities are struggling with trust in their local government. A lot of communities, you know, the percentage is very low on the people that trust their local government. Not sure exactly why that is, maybe it's just the time we're living in right now, but I don't think anyone here is here to make any excuses for this. We all need to do better, and I think you have our commitment that we will. So we can come back to the slides when you guys have your -- well, actually, probably it won't even be worth coming back to those, but we can refer back to those when you guys have your questions. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Recreation and Park Director, Jeff Leatherman, to talk about how parks are planned and some elements of that process. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Leatherman, your Parks Director. Rusty is turning off the lights for me so that you can see these slides. We had them on for Gary's presentation because the MOUs and the other slides were a little difficult to see, and you have them in your handout, and the lights will come back on here just shortly as I run through this. I've been your Parks Director for, well, since July 10th is when I started, so the last few months. My history is, I came out of California, brought my family, I've got four boys, we moved here into town, and really excited to be here as part of our park system. I work with a great staff, a great city council, and a great recreation commission, and my job really is just to give you a little bit of background on what our department does within the city. Hopefully, many of you are familiar with our parks. We have about 1,000 acres of parks and facilities within the city. Many of those have been developed into active recreation facilities, active river parkways and other facilities, and some of them have not. Some of them are just private holdings or in holdings right now for future development. Some of them are partially developed for different recreational uses. The mission of our department is to strive to meet the leisure needs of the citizens of Roswell by providing quality, comprehensive recreation opportunities in parks and facilities, and we continue to try to do that every day with the great staff. We also have a recreation commission, and some of you may not be familiar with our commission. Our commission is actually formed under Georgia state law. The city has authorized to form a commission to serve the recreation needs. They were introduced earlier. There's a seven-member commission. They are volunteer members of our community who serve at the pleasure of our council and mayor. Their primary role is to set policy for our department and be the guide for our department to execute some of our strategic plans and some of our budget opportunities that we have, and I'll talk about that role also in a couple more slides. There's been a lot of conversation about kind of process, and so I'm going to run through, and you have this handout, and I'm not going to go through every box and every arrow of this in your handout, but there's some boards that are posted, and you also have this slide. We have two general processes that we're going to talk about tonight. One is our five-year strategic plan. We're currently in that process right now of the 2017 to the 2021 strategic planning cycle. This is also referred to as our Clemson study. The University of Clemson did this for us. It's posted on our website, and this really guides our park development plans over five years. It guides our priorities for our budget recommendation and gives us different tiers of recommendations. If anybody has had the opportunity to read through this plan, you'll find that we have a Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three recommendations, with the Tier One being the highest recommendations from our community input and community survey process. You'll see things like our river parkway master plan development, trails and connectivity, our gymnastic needs and our aquatic needs for our community, and those are all based on our community input process that we do for our strategic planning efforts. A couple of notes, as I've had conversations with different people here in this room and throughout the community, when you read through the trails and the trails and connectivities, there's some nuances. What we're not talking about is, we're not talking directly about mountain biking trails in our Tier One expectations in that strategic plan. Those are multi-use trails similar to our parkways and our river parkways, as well as our complete street projects that our Department of Transportation does. You'll find the mountain biking recommendations further down in the Tier Two and Tier Three recommendations, but they are included in those plans as a whole. The second handout that you'll see in your packet is our park development plan, and this should be viewed as something that's essentially stacked underneath our five-year strategic plan. And what this does is, this is the process that we use to develop individual parks within our system. We take our community input, our five-year strategic plan, and then we look at budget recommendations with our city council to make recommendations for developing other parks and other facilities within our city. So we have our public input process that defines our strategic planning effort, and then we have our master plan development process, which is this slide and also in your handout, that defines generally how we go about developing parks and facilities within There's also been a number of conversations recently about active and passive parks, and I've had probably, just in the course of the last probably week and a half or two weeks, the question continues to come up of how do we define active and passive parks? I'll tell you, within the recreation industry in my 20-plus years now, my industry has not figured this out yet. It's an ongoing discussion, because every community defines it a little bit differently. What I have up here is our Georgia State SCORP, which is our statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. This is a five-year plan that every state has across our nation that essentially qualifies each state for federal funding within the recreation and park industry. Number of our staff members here were involved in some of the development of these recommendations. I was involved in the development of the recommendations for the state of California two years ago for our SCORP, and what you'll find in the SCORP right now is active parks and recreation is anything that gets your heart racing. That's a pretty wide range. Where passive parks, anything that don't require physical engagement. Your top Google search for active and passive parks, a passive recreation area is generally an undeveloped space or environmentally sensitive area that requires minimal development. And something that I'm a little bit more familiar with is the zoning code down in San Diego, which I've used this definition a number of times in some of my projects, is an outdoor area along with minimal incidental building structures designed and developed and intended for low-intensity passive recreational use. And the only reason I bring this up is that we talk a lot about different uses within our parks facilities, and when we say active and passive parks, we all may not be talking about the same thing, and what we have is the advantage as a community through our park development process to define what this means for ourselves. It can mean a lot of different things for a lot of different land uses, and you can combine these active and passive uses within individual park facilities, and they can work together in harmony with their own space and within their own activity. Couple of just quick closing slides, just a moment to brag about what our department is doing as it relates to our strategic plan, is we have our river parkway master plan. That's about a $35 million investment into our community. That plan was developed using the process that I described earlier in 2016. We're currently expanding our river parkway and our river walk along the river, which is a multi-use trail. We're expanding trails around our Vicry Mill property and continuing to work with an application to our federal government for the ASAN property, which is about a $1.2 million improvement of that facility if we're successful in the grant. We're also working at the request of our mayor and council to start to look at policies related to our master plan development, and that's where your recreation commission comes in, and that's the work that we'll be doing over the next few months, is to start to redefine what our policies are surrounding our master plans, how long are they valid for, how do we use them, how do we renew them, and having that policy conversation at the recreation commission level, and then eventually take that up to the council for a recommendation. We'll also be looking at recommendations around our master planning efforts, and do they need to be renewed? We'll be doing the policy first, and then we'll come behind that with recommendations on future master plans. All of these are part of our public meeting process. You can find our recreation commission meetings are available online on the city website, the location for our workshops, as well as our evening meetings. Those are all open to the public. We welcome public input and public comment as part of those processes, as well as then when they roll up to committee and council. And so there's a number of opportunities for the community to hear about what those policies will be in the future and how our office is working with our city administration, our REIT Commission, and our council on those plans. With that, I'll ask Rusty to turn the lights back on. We're going to transition into public comment, just a couple of housekeeping items on the recreation side. We normally don't host a lot of town hall-type meetings in these buildings, so just a couple of logistics. Our queuing line for public comment will be to my left and to your right here along this back wall. We kind of have a purple marker, which is our on-deck spot. I'm going to turn this podium so that you can face the council with your comments. If you can queue up on that side, and then we'll have you exit out the center for those comments. One other thing is, we'll have our timer, which is over here on the side. Now, this is one of our shot clock timers, and if we hit 3 minutes and 10 seconds, there's a really loud, annoying buzzer that goes off. It is not our intention to buzzer anybody in this room. We're going to limit the time to three minutes as requested by the mayor. There's going to be a little bit more time on the clock, so when you see that clock stop, you'll know that you're out of time, but I will apologize in advance if the button pushers get a little funky with the button and we have a timer go off. I do apologize. Again, it's not our intent. With that, I will turn the meeting back over to the mayor for a couple more announcements. Thank you.
Okay, so just to go back over the rules, each person can come forward one time. You get three minutes. Please state your name and address. We would also like to hear from residents and business owners first, so if you don't reside in the city of Roswell or own a business in Roswell, we ask that you wait until all of our Roswell residents have been heard. We also have provisions. If you can't stand in line, if you have a physical issue, please come to the front of the line, and a staff member will help you and put you to the front. Then also, we've got our staff members back here, Katrina Singletary and Karen Zittimer, that many of you know Karen through next door, but they are taking copious notes on questions, concerns, anything that we need to address on the website tomorrow morning. As I've said before, in general, please direct your comments to the body and not individual council members, and we will get those responses up to you as quickly as we can this next week. Then also, I would like to thank staff, because staff, I already talked about the police and fire, but staff has done a great job with this, compiling this information. I appreciate all of their hard work, and I do think that we owe them a round of applause, because they're doing their jobs, but they're doing it well. And then again, I would like to thank council for all of their input and participation in this. I'd like to thank the REIT Commission, that are all volunteers, and then I'd also like to thank Roswell Inc. for their economic development efforts. So at this point, again, I'll turn it over for three-minute comments. We don't want to buzz anyone, but I know that we're going to have a lot of people that want to speak, so please be respectful to each other.
My name is Michael Litten, Martin's Landing, and I want to share a little Roswell history with you all. Two decades ago, Roswell City Hall was packed to the rafters with folks that were passionate about this land we now call Big Creek Park. Polty homes had their eyes set on this land for development, and the soccer community thought it might be a good place to put some, at the time, much-needed soccer fields. And there was a group led by David Tolleson, Margaret Cash, and Laura Cordell Seidlinger that had a different vision. They had a vision for having this park used by walkers, bikers, runners, to enjoy nature. David Tolleson got up and spoke first, and he received a resounding show of support. People were cheering, they were applauding. were so callously wanting to cut down those trees. I'm astounded, appalled. The quote, "tree people, mountain bikers, and nimby's, we can handle. We just have to power through." I am the face of all of those, and I am offended, and I think everyone in this room is probably one of those people. Am I right? I don't have words for y'all. I really don't. I was beside myself that entire weekend. Couldn't sleep. I guarantee you, everybody in this room couldn't sleep. We were emailing each other. We had no power. So the word bully might be every one of y'all on that table, because you had the power, we didn't. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Rucker. I live at 775 Springview Court, Roswell, Georgia. I live in Spring Ridge subdivision. I'm a Roswell resident for 37 years and a founding member of the Big Creek Park Community Alliance. The alliance is recommending that the park's master plan be updated to reflect the park's current use for trees and trails. That means continuing to maintain the existing green space and the existing walking and biking paths. Our group is growing. Please come and join us. To capture a snapshot of the park usage, the alliance organized a vehicle count and a survey focusing on the current park usage. On one weekend, Saturday and Sunday, this was a partial weekend count only, we captured a minimum of 433 cars entering the park, and that's on a weekend only. If you take that weekend count and the average number of cars that came through, and you multiply that times 52 weeks, that's a minimum count of 33,774 cars that entered this park annually. And remember, those counts were based on a weekend only. So in addition, we did a survey of the community, and as of 4:30 today, we had 973 respondents. And again, our focus was on the current usage. First of all, we asked the users of the park, where do you live? 61% of those are Roswell residents, and they are the primary users of this park. Roswell and North Fulton together comprised 86%, and Roswell, North Fulton, and Greater Atlanta are a total of 98%. Our other survey findings found that half of our visitors come weekly. They drive there. They love to come with someone else. It's more fun together. Cycling and mountain biking is the top activity, followed quickly by walking and enjoying nature. So let's do the math. At a minimum, if we have annually 33,774 vehicles and two people come together, that's a minimum of 67,548 visitors a year. This is a busy park. We also asked what additional amenities would increase your enjoyment of the park, and the top two were at the front entrance, a bathroom, and improved traffic safety, and frankly, it was just leave the park alone was what a lot of people said. Overall, overwhelmingly, the top comments, half of the people commented, said please keep the green space and the trails. There was an indication that they wanted more youth activities. The mountain bike trails are a big asset, and greenway access is the reason that many people purchase in Roswell. I'd like to personally thank Jeff Leatherman, who has already discussed some things with me, and I'd love to sit down with Jeff and review the detailed results of this survey. So based again on the survey, the vehicle count, and the community comments, the Big Creek Park Community Alliance is recommending that the master plan be updated to reflect its current usage for trees and trails. Thank you.
Those are going to be hard to follow. David Rossi, live off Middlewood Lane in Roswell. I've grown up here most of my life. Grew up in Marietta. My father's had a small business here for most of my childhood and my early adult life, so consider myself to be a longtime resident of Roswell. I came tonight more for, can you hear me better? I came here tonight to get more answers than excuses, and so far, it seems like we've gotten excuses. One of the persons from the council, I can't recall, who even stated they not read or even understand the current MOU that the park is under. So I'm hoping at some point the council could address that, or the mayor. So where can we find the MOU that is currently for the park? I haven't seen it. I've dug through the website, haven't dug enough, but I'd like to see what's currently there, and I'd hope that the council would at least read the MOU that's currently in place before they would sign another one. That was disturbing to me. I hope it's disturbing to everyone else that they would put another MOU in place without even having read the one previous. That comment came out Sunday night, the day before the meeting. The other questions I have are, what is a multi-use trail? Is it walking? Is it hiking? Is that two uses? That means multi-use? When does multi-use include bikers? Is it paved path for the greenway? Does that mean multi-use? That's great. That's a small part of the cycling community. You can ride a road bike anywhere in Roswell, any street, any neighborhood, any park, road bike. That's great. I don't road bike. It's dangerous. I've had close calls. I've had friends that have not survived their rides. One of my good buddies was found in a ditch because he was struck. We assume by baseball bat or side view mirror. I don't street bike after that. I mountain bike. I can only mountain bike at Big Creek. If Big Creek's a tier two or three, and that means you can take away mountain bike trails, that's pretty disappointing, because where am I going to go after work? The traffic is horrendous. The council continues to approve multifamily dwellings. They continue to approve variances to destroy setbacks. So the roads are never going to improve. Traffic's only getting worse. The only place I can mountain bike after work, especially as winter comes and it gets darker, is Big Creek. I can't go to So Creek near SunTrust Stadium. Anybody driven there after work? It's pretty bad. You're not getting there, not before dark. Anybody tried to go to Blankets Creek up 575? You're not getting there. It's not happening. Big Creek is it. To take that away would be a shame. And the other thing I keep hearing tonight is the difference between active versus passive. I don't think anyone here cares, active or passive. The thing we wanted to hear tonight is how to make Big Creek permanent in its current state. I'm hoping those are addressed tonight by the council and by the mayor. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Daniman. I live at 335 Tyson Circle, Roswell. Been a resident since 1993. I guess I'm not really up to date on everything that the city is planning, but when we were so blessed to have this land as park property years ago, we were told that it was a natural preserve and it would always stay that way. Not that the council would not develop other areas of Roswell. So I guess I'm really confused now. In years gone by, if you call, there's lots of land behind my house that needs improvement. There are trees that have fallen. There's all kinds of debris. And if you, I mean, the park employees know me well, because I call them all the time, and they tell me it's a natural preserve, and we don't have to do anything. So my question to you is, is it or is it not? I mean, if all this is being done, whoops, are we a natural preserve? I don't know. Maybe we could address that. I thought that we were, and I thought that it would stay that way forever. I think everybody wants it to. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Russ DeLuca. I live in, sitting along the river here in East Roswell. Actually, I'm going to change the topic a little bit. I like to talk about the Seven Branches Legacy Park, which is right across the street here at Eaves Road and Holcomb Bridge. For those of you who might not be aware of it, this property has been worked on by the city for developing a park. There's roughly 53 acres of land with streams running through it that end up in Martins Lake. The intent is to create a usable passive park there and provide more green space for residents. The park would be bordered on one side by almost a mile along Holcomb Bridge Road. The city's acquired all but 2.8 acres of this land, and the rest of it's necessary, though, in order to actually give the path the full impact of being able to enter into Martins Landing area. The question I have is very specific. What is the status of this acquisition from the HBR Trust? My understanding is the city decided many months ago to acquire this property, but as I understand today, nothing's actually been done, and I'm trying to wondering, what is the city posture on this acquisition? And has the city attorney been authorized to negotiate with the owners to acquire this land and actually make this a fully functioning park for us in East Roswell? Thank you.
My name's Dr. Rob Samorn. I've been a Roswell resident for 25 years. My business has been here for 12. I guess you wanted questions. I guess my first question would be, when you say this is off the table, what does that mean? Does that mean it's going to be coming back at another time? Does it mean the future plan for the park has changed or is not going to happen anymore? But I think as a resident and many of the residents here, what we are looking for is to see this park stay exactly the way it is. As a mountain biker, road cyclist, tennis player, resident, and just understanding the demographics, the need for this, the impact that traffic could have by adding structures or changing these things, is detrimental to the community. I think one of the reasons why we all love Roswell is times like this, our board, our council, our police department, our parks, our REIT. There's more to our quality of life than receiving grants and dropping our taxes by a couple dollars. The reason why we're here is for the whole city and the community that we have. Thank you.
My name is Sue Fritz. I live in Martins Landing. I didn't come tonight prepared to speak to you, but I felt like some things needed to be said. And the first one is thank you for this meeting. I think I was very upset when I came to the last meeting, and the issue was taken off the table without the opportunity to comment, and I very much appreciate you doing this and the fact that you're open to hearing comments. I think I hold myself partially accountable for not understanding what was going on with the park and our parks in general, because I haven't kept up with the website. And part of that is because Roswell has traditionally done such a wonderful job, right? Our parks are great. That's one of the reasons we moved to Roswell. It's one of the reasons several of our friends have moved to Roswell, because we showed them the parks in Roswell. We use Big Creek Park several times a week. We use the Greenway. We use the River Pass. And we don't drive to the parks, so we're not in any of the statistics, because we ride our bike almost everywhere. So I want to thank you for having the parks, taking care of the parks, and I hope that we understand the plan for the parks better. I think an annual review of the park system in Roswell, since it is such an important part of our community, and some sort of memorandum on the website or town hall like this where we can discuss the parks, would be useful to everyone in the community. This park is not only used by adults and mountain bikers, and that is very important. It's used by the children of our community to learn skills that help them stay fit, stay healthy, and stay athletic. So I think that's important, too. I have heard several comments that are a fear that the mountain biking facilities will be taken away in the park, and that the use of the park currently by the mountain bike associations will be limited, because there was so much resistance, and that the park may go away someday. So I hope that isn't true, and I'd like to see, as the last gentleman suggested, that addressed on the website in writing, so that we know the plan and we have plenty of time to respond, not just a weekend. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luis Amato. I live over in Roswell Chase, so my house basically backs up to Big Creek Park. I've lived in Roswell for about 13 years now. I moved to Roswell because of Big Creek Park. I was seeing houses all over the place. When the real estate agent showed me Big Creek Park, I was sold. I consider myself a power user of Big Creek Park. I do it all over there, running, cycling, mountain biking, hiking, watching the birds, you name it. I use the park easily, five, six days a week. Because of that, I know of the wide variety of people that use Big Creek Park. My kids use it. I see young people, old people, people riding bikes that would not be riding a bike if it wasn't for a place like Big Creek Park. So I know that Big Creek Park is unique amongst Roswell parks and certainly among the city. There are very, very few parks in the city that are wide-open nature spaces like Big Creek Park. They have that amenity of trails, both paved and unpaved. So I think the value of Big Creek Park is the fact that it's undeveloped, that it has those trails, and it also houses a big abundance of wildlife. I see it all the time. So first of all, I just wanted to give you my background. Thanks for having this meeting. I was looking over your timeline, and one of the things that sticks out to me is that you guys had, you know, everybody that was involved in those meetings, you had about a dozen meetings over the period of about a year, okay? Yet, we were informed of what was, what your plans were for the park. Within 24 hours, thousands of Roswell's residents told you they didn't want this. Yet, you met, you had a dozen meetings over a year for this park, and not a single one of you raised a red flag that people might not want this? I mean, that to me is a serious disconnect. That's just homework for you, that there's a disconnect between this side of the room and this side of the room. I understand that you're looking out for economic development and what the park could be, but you got to think about what these people pay for and what we want out of that park. And second thing, I would like to see some kind of protection enabled for Big Creek Park, so that we don't have to go through this ever again. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Melinda Merrill. I'm at 120 Pine Ridge Way in Roswell. I've been a resident for probably about four years. I moved here having the choice of basically anywhere in the southeast because of the proximity to Atlanta and the park system. I wanted to live somewhere that was on the river, because I've always lived on the ocean. I've also always been involved in surf rider, other environmental awareness campaigns. At any time that we had development, we did have to look at wetlands. We did have to look at the environmental impact, and I saw two points- Within 24 hours, thousands of Roswell's residents told you they didn't want this. Yet you met, you had a dozen meetings over a year for this park, and not a single one of you raised a red flag that people might not want this? I mean, that to me is a serious disconnect. That's just homework for you, that there's a disconnect between this side of the room and this side of the room. I understand that you're looking out for economic development and what the park could be, but you gotta think about what these people pay for and what we want out of that park. And second thing, I would like to see some kind of protection enabled for Big Creek Park so that we don't have to go through this ever again. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Melinda Merrill. I'm at 120 Pine Ridge Way in Roswell. I've been a resident for probably about four years. I moved here having the choice of basically anywhere in the southeast because of the proximity to Atlanta and the park system. I wanted to live somewhere that was on the river because I've always lived on the ocean. I've also always been involved in surf rider, other environmental awareness campaigns. At any time that we had development, we did have to look at wetlands. We did have to look at the environmental impact. And I saw two points on the timeline where that was done, but I wasn't able to find any reports. I don't know if there was talk of looking at the environmental impact, but no report was ever completed. But I would like to know where that data will be published in the future, perhaps on the website. There can be a tab for environmental impact for programs. Because that is very important. I'm sure if you've gone through Big Creek Park or looked at developments along the river, you see obviously the impact that it will have on the river as well as other environmental impacts. Secondly, I've been involved in test development and education ancillary to my career for decades. And you have one question in the survey that I completed today that seems to be written in such a way to have the public say that they would like to develop Big Creek Park into things like aquatic facilities. So if you go to question number eight, the way that it's written, you have to make three selections. The only way to make three selections and to indicate that you do not want Big Creek Park developed into something like a swimming facility or a gym is to not follow the directions. So you might want to consider how you write the surveys. I'm happy to help. But they need to be written in a different way. And then saying that you have just 200 acres, you're not specifying what those 200 acres are. Asking more specifically, would you like this area that is flat, that is unused, that is completely unused, not Big Creek Park? And we can develop it into something that's needed by the neighborhood. Perhaps there are no other parks in that area of Roswell. That's valid. But lumping all of the undeveloped park area or, it's not undeveloped, the Creek Park's not undeveloped. But I think you get what I'm saying, that the question's either written improperly or deceptively. I do love Roswell. I love the parks. I still think that we're one of the best places in Georgia in the southeast for enjoying the parks. I would just like to keep it that way. I don't want to move. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Molito. I'm the Marketing Director of the Roswell Alpharetta Mountain Bike Organization. My address is 9795 North Pond Circle, Roswell, Georgia 30076. Good evening, Mayor Henry, council members, and Roswell residents. In August of this year, the Big Creek Park celebrated its 18th anniversary. As you know, the park was purchased as 159 acres of green space on a bond referendum voted on and paid for by the citizens to preserve their community. In 2002, the Roswell Alpharetta Mountain Bike Organization, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, partnered with the Roswell Parks and Rec Department to create and maintain the multi-use trail system enjoyed by all park visitors. We currently operate under the authority of the Roswell Parks and Rec Department in Big Creek Park in accordance with the Joint Memorandum of Understanding. Rambo volunteers have also built multi-use trail systems in partnership with the Parks and Rec Department of Alpharetta and Forsyth County. Over the last 16 years, Rambo and our Roswell business partners have invested in equivalent of more than $500,000 of total value, including more than 20,000 hours of community service. Rambo volunteers have created seven miles of multi-use trails for all skill levels, two pump tracks to teach children basic riding skills, an expert level riding center that attracts local and national visitors. Numerous Roswell residents recreate on both the Greenway and the multi-use trails. The unique combination of these park features enable kids and adults to enjoy the outdoors while growing in skill and endurance. Big Creek's unique infrastructure and natural topography enables a multitude of Roswell residents to enjoy this green space, including hikers, dog walkers and trail runners, middle and high school cross-country running teams, middle and high school mountain bike teams, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, plus Eagle Scouts, who frequently deliver their final projects as a community service investment in the park. We support Roswell residents' desire to preserve Big Creek Park as green space with trees, trails, and natural wetlands.
Hello, my name is Bob Knoll. I live in the Spring Ridge neighborhood, which is about a mile from Big Creek Park. I'm an avid mountain biker, a husband to a trail runner, and father of a Cub Scout at Northwood Elementary, fifth grader. Big Creek Park has played and continues to play a significant part in my life. When my wife and I moved to Roswell almost 15 years ago, the park immediately became part of our everyday life. I biked while she ran trails. When my wife was nine months pregnant with our son, we spent hours walking the trails trying to encourage our son to join us. Our son learned to mountain bike at Big Creek, and he loves the pump tracks. Together, we volunteer with Rambo to maintain and build new trails. The trails are important to not just my family, but as a Cub Scout den leader, we use the trails to show the boys how critical nature is to us, how we treat it, and in return, it treats us. The park is full of Eagle Scout projects that teach boys how to manage projects, volunteers, and the value of hard work. At Northwood Elementary, the fourth graders take a field trip and hike through the trails of the park. They're able to explore and see firsthand that habitats are everywhere, even in their backyard. So what I'd like to see with the master plan, I would love to see Big Creek remain a park full of trees and trails. I would like to maybe see the parking lot expanded, some restroom facilities at the upper lot, and a picnic pavilion added to the new master plan and to expand use of the park. Thank you.
My name's Jeff Horstak, and I live in the Highland Colony neighborhood in Roswell. And I appreciate the comments and the springboard off of some of the things that were said earlier. I looked through the lens of the Roswell as one of the coaches for the Roswell Nitro Mountain Biking Team. So we've got a middle school team and two other teams that practice at Big Creek. And I'll just tell you a little bit about our league. So the league is just a few years old. There are 25 leagues in multiple states, and our Georgia league has had explosive growth. We've got up to 850 riders, and our team right now is practicing over there at Big Creek for the big race coming up this weekend. Those 850 riders are supported by 450 coaches. We've got about 50 teams from all over the states, and they're going to race about 16,000 miles this week, or, excuse me, for this season. Our riders practice twice a week. There are two other teams that ride out there as well. We've got about 40 riders. We're sponsored by two teachers at Roswell High. We put about 1,300 miles a month on those trails, and it's all due to the volunteer effort that the community has put in in Rambo. So appreciate that. The league's hashtag is More Kids on Bikes. It's a lifelong activity. It's something that's, again, it's exploding, and it's very easy to recruit for this activity. So I would also say that with that, the kids also and the parents spend a ton of money in the neighborhood. There's five bike shops in the area, Roswell Bikes Fresh, Atlanta Cycling, and they're spending thousands of dollars on the bikes. Then they outgrow the bike, then they spend another several thousand dollars on more bikes. And they also spend that money on the maintenance as well. So we're sponsored by the bike shops in the area. We're also sponsored by restaurants like Lucky's and support those for our after-practice gatherings, and we really appreciate that. Like one of the gentlemen said earlier, it's the only place for us to practice. If there's no park, there's no place for us to practice, and it's really just impractical for that burgeoning league and team for Roswell and the surrounding areas to really, to expand and do well. But also add, like some of the other people, I moved to Roswell specifically for the outdoor activities. It's unique. We've got rivers. We've got hiking trails. We've got something that's very, very valuable. And I would even propose so much when it comes to Seven Branches, is we've got seven mile trails here, but even to link those together and really become something unique and really have a treasure here. It's a gem in this metro area to have a park that's still a green space that you can have these activities. It's unprecedented, really. There's few communities that can really say that. I might also add that they're, we're going to race down to Millidgeville. They are craving for a trail down there, and they're proud to put on a race. That was built by volunteers. There's a track out in Brassleton built by volunteers. REI gave tens of thousands of dollars for the south side for trail riding. So there's a lot of momentum and a lot of growth in the mountain bike area.
Hi, my name is Horace Buchanan, and I live in Horseshoe Bend. I'd like to change the tempo a little bit. I would recommend that the city of Roswell file suit against AT&amp;T for the electronic invasion of our homes. We pay telephone bills, each one of us, and also the people that buy the hours to get into the phone AT&amp;T. So AT&amp;T is getting from both sides of the equation. Don't tell me about costs because I'm sure you could find a good contingent fee attorney that would take this up, sue them for a couple of million dollars to get their payment. The other thing I would like to see is the reconstitution of Milton County. I'm sick and tired of paying what I consider a king's ransom to a bloated, unresponsive Fulton County. In Fulton County... Well, I mean, Fulton County until recently, until the president got his increase in salary, we had one of the highest, Fulton County had one of the highest paid, and I use this term lightly, public servants in the nation. I'd also like to recommend that Roswell stop issuing building permits for both town homes and apartments. I consider those tomorrow's ghettos. I'd also recommend that you all go to Dallas. My daughter recently moved to Dallas, and Dallas moves. I don't know what they're, one thing I did know is that their lights are a lot faster than ours, but traffic moves in Dallas. Thank you.
We're just going to reset the shot clock here in just a second and get it going again.
Hi, I'm Ken Lopez. I am a 20-year Roswell resident. I live in the historic area, 522 Creekview Lane. I own a business here. I've raised my three children here. I'm a hiker, kayaker, trail runner, and mountain biker. And living in Roswell is no accident because I enjoy those activities, and I count myself lucky to be able to do all those things in my own backyard. Mountain biking can only be done in Roswell in the Big Creek area, so if we lose that, we don't have anything. Like the majority of the people in this room, I don't spend a lot of time on issues of politics and this sort of thing, and frankly, would prefer not to. But the good thing that's come out of this is it's made me aware of what's going on. I got a chance to meet most of you in one of the sessions that you had. I've got a chance to hear from you and hear from the community and see how everybody's come together in a time when it feels like people are divisive. Right now, I don't feel a lot of division in this room, and I'd love for you guys to join us as well because I think the opportunity is for everybody to really win here. Green space is one of the things that makes Roswell really special. I've lived in other parts of the country. This is really unique. The last Recreation Needs Assessment that was performed here said that green space was the number one thing that people crave and want more of, not less of. And I think that it's the one thing that we can't make more of. If we decide we want to convert these abandoned shopping malls into green space, that's the one thing we probably can't do, at least not in our lifetime or our children's lifetime. So we've got to protect the green space that we've got. And I hope it's clear that that's what the residents want as well. So with all that said, I think that there's a lot of things that all of us could have done differently, but I think there's a chance for us to reset. I think there's a chance for us to redefine our relationship. I've heard that there's certain tensions that exist now between the mountain biking community and the council and the mayor, and I would like to urge us to bridge that because I think that we're an asset to the community. As you heard, we've put 20,000 volunteer hours plus into maintaining those trails, and we can be a real asset. We can be on your side. We want to be on your side, and we want to be on Roswell's side. And I think that you're hearing the community showing up en masse here and saying exactly the same thing, that this is what the people who elected you want. And I think that's really what you guys want, is to be on our side. Please protect Big Creek Park and frankly, all green space of this type for us and for generations to come. And let's define a new future for Roswell as our mutual legacy. Thank you.
I'm Chet Tooten. I'm from Roswell, 235 Hollyberry Court on the west side of Roswell. I've been in Roswell for over 22 years, raised a family here. I've been an active outdoors person my entire life. I'm a Boy Scout leader, have been a Boy Scout leader for over 25 years, most of that here in Roswell, currently with Troop 431, the Roswell United Methodist Church. I've enjoyed Big Creek Park my entire time it's been in existence, ever since it started. All right. What I wanted to say was, Roswell, what brought me to Roswell, I lived here for a brief time in the 80s, but what brought me back to Roswell was the parks. The parks and the quality of life and the people here are what make Roswell great. And I, green space parks are my top priority, have always been that way, even as my kids grew up. My kids learned how to ride. They went for hikes. They did all of that in the trails. My son's Eagle Project is involved with the mountain biking community there at Big Creek Park. This is something that we want to keep. This is what the community wants. And Big Creek in itself is a very unique piece of property. I've done many of those service hours, building and maintaining the trails at Big Creek. It's a very rocky land. It has a lot of terrain features, a lot of hills. It is the worst place I could possibly think of to build anything flat. It is, and that's what makes it great for mountain biking and hiking and in nature. The fact that you can be out on that trail, run into a family of deer, I've had an owl fly right over my head, I see turtles, I see snakes. There's a lot of activity there, wildlife. When you're back on those trails, you're not, you're not out in the city. You're in the mountains, and it has that feel to it, and you can't get that anywhere else in this area. And I really want... I want some way, like Ken said earlier, just in front of me here, how can we work with the city council to make this a permanent use for this park? We want to make it a park that we believe in, the park that we are all here supporting. Why can't we make that the master plan for Big Creek Park? Thank you.
Jimmy, I'll just have Jeff keep the time here. So for those that are still coming up speaking, Jeff here in the front row will keep time, and he'll give you a little wave if you're getting close to your three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jessica, and I live at 2200 Big Creek, and the apartment complex is right next door to Big Creek Park. The reason that I moved there was because the first time that I drove to Big Creek was that I saw the park and how big it was and how many trees there were. And that pretty much sold me to where I live now. So when I heard that you guys were going to clear cut 60 acres of it and just basically wipe it out, I was angry. I'm going to be honest. I mean, like everybody has said, green space is not something you can get back. And the fact that you guys thought that it was a good idea to clear cut all of that kind of makes me lose trust in what you really can do for me as a citizen. I hike over there. I know that a lot of people from my apartment complex go over there, so I am representing not the mountain bike community, but the people who don't have bikes. We care too about Big Creek. It's our park as well. We live next door to it, and we want to see it stay as is. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Grant Brown. I've been living, or my family moved to Roswell in about 1968, so we've seen a lot of growth. Kind of on a side story that applies to all parks, obviously, is disability access. And a lot of times, it's actually a lack of access in the means, which is a big issue for me, is parking. Not to say that there's not enough there, but half of what's being used is being used So I would like to see or figure out some way to educate the public on what are the rules regarding, you know, the use of a disabled spot. For example, just because you have a tag or a permit to park doesn't mean you can just park in one spot and run in. The person who that tag is issued to has to at least be in the car. It's a little fuzzy on whether or not they actually have to exit the car or not. So I'm a little unclear on that after looking at the AMA site. I would like to see at least a small dog park in every park, and they can be kind of invisible. And I just discovered the Woodstock Road Park, which is a very tight community of folks, and it's the one by the water tower. I think it's called the Woodstock Road Soccer Complex, and it's no bigger. I mean, it's from here to that wall right there, but it's a chance for folks to get together. And every dog park that I go to, which unfortunately, until I found this park, I've been having to travel to Johns Creek or Will's Park all the way from Roswell, you know, because I take a route daily. And so that means I'm buying gas in Alpharetta or Johns Creek, so I'm going to stop at a store that's, or a place that's on that route. So that's, you know, one aspect. So an invisible park, if you go to Will's Park, it's still green space. You know, I wouldn't want to see any trees cut down, just route the fence as you may without disrupting, you know, the area, obviously planting of grass, turf, debatable on that. And as far as the parking thing, which really gets under my skin, I could probably write 10 tickets a day, just if I were out on a Saturday doing my, you know, shopping around or what have you. And I have heard a rumor, and I'd like some kind of feedback somewhere. I've been told, I actually went to the police department and spoke with an officer there, and he was, I have his card, sorry, I don't recall his name, but he said he thought that there was a means whereby the chief can deputize an individual, obviously, probably have to go through checks and what have you, and training. And that way, because I know it's difficult, you know, because by the time the police get there, if you call, they're already gone. But, you know, there was one instance where if you go between games, people tend to drive their car to get the equipment and the kids piled in, and they'll use a handicap parking space to do that, and they may only be there three to five minutes. But that's when I was, you know, but I don't know that. So I go ahead and park my car somewhere, and by the time I painfully get there, the person's gone, they loaded up, and they're gone. So I miss my opportunity because I have to walk back to the car, and hopefully the spot would be opened by them. So I'd really like to see that, and, you know, I've noticed some clues, things like people parked in backwards in a handicap parking spot, and there's no permit showing, you know, they're hiding the tag, which... Okay? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sean Burnham, owner of Roswell Bikes here in Roswell. Fresh Bike started in 2008 as a mobile bike service. We opened our brick and mortar establishment in 2011. Bad economy during the recession as we were trying to obviously rebound locally and nationally. We've seen growth every year. Like many Roswell businesses, we rely on the park. We utilize the park. Our customers are able to live a healthier, happier life by engaging in activities in the park. You see a very wide, diverse range of folks participating in activities, moms, dads, children as young as 18 months, as old as 70-plus years old, cycling, walking, you know, the wide range of activities. But all businesses, especially bike businesses in Roswell, do rely heavily on the park. 2006 outdoor sports and rec analysis of outdoor economic studies showed that over $730 billion is going into our economy. That's $88 billion in tax revenue for federal, state, and local governments to be able to capitalize on. That creates 6.5 million jobs. Now, last year alone, in 2018 in the state of Georgia, we saw $27.3 billion into our economy and generated 238,000 jobs. That's 31,000 more jobs in the automotive industry combined in the state of Georgia. There's an asset here that we need to capitalize on and see how we can better utilize these resources in our community, both the natural resources, the historic resources, the cultural resources. And if we're helping our community and citizens live healthier, happier lives, that's going to be better for all of us. Now, I do have to say, there are great examples throughout locally, the state, and regionally of municipalities engaging in outdoor recreation using parks like Big Creek and helping their local economies, aiding places in Aniston, Alabama, Woodstock, Georgia, Chattanooga, Tennessee, Brevard, North Carolina, Pisgah, North Carolina. There's case studies that I just gave the young lady back there that y'all can reference, that you can see that there's positive things that we can gain from that to utilize for our own park and our own natural spaces, and as seen in the need assessment, that that is our highest rated priority. It's not squares and rectangles as Mr. Leatherman presented at the Tuesday meeting in September. I spoke with Mr. Bob Brookmaker, excuse me, for about 45 minutes last Friday, and counter to what Mr. Leatherman said, mountain bike trails are a component of trails and connectivity. So that is not accurate. Mountain biking is part of that puzzle. So we can't just disassociate a component of that $15,000 study that taxpayers in Roswell paid for, and then for whatever reason, we're ignoring. We're not utilizing the data. We're not appreciating the amount of wealth of information there. And the bottom line is, we have a lot of young people that utilize that park at the high school, middle school level, and we don't need to take opportunities away from our young people. So thank you.
I'm David Tollison, Willis Springs. First of all, thank you for being here. You could be on your way to the beach for a fall break, or watching the Braves, or Thursday night football, so you're here, and that means a lot. So thank you for that. So I was on the council when Big Creek Park was purchased, and I just wanted to go over a few items that speak to the passion around this park. First, this property is unique among all of our parks. Every other property was purchased and initiated by the council, the commission, and staff saying, "We have a need." This park alone was established because residents for eight years lobbied for it and said, "Give us a chance to vote on a bond." And when a bond came, it passed by 83% approval for parkland acquisition. It was not for economic development, not that that's not a good purpose, but when Mayor Henry and I were part of the notorious Gang of Four, we would have said that if you're redeveloping trees, you're left with a bunch of paper or pulp. So not a bad purpose, economic development, but not here, not now. The master plan. So after we purchased this land, and it was citizen-driven, we had a series of charrettes with a professional facilitator who helped guide the process, and citizens came and gave their input. And so the master plan, which you've seen, that has the 12 tennis courts, the three buildings, leaves most of the property for trails, walking trails and the like, but it very carefully kept the creek areas and the lowlands safe so we could keep Roswell's water supply safe, because of course, the intake's downstream on Big Creek. And the buildings at the time, the nadatorium, the visual arts center, I think a gymnastics center, were built on the ridge. But that was 17 years ago. At my work, you know, y'all are business people and have various backgrounds, we do a strategic plan every three years because the people we serve come and go. People in Roswell have moved in, moved out. 17 years ago, my kids were six and eight. They're in their mid-20s now and working adults. So needs change, plans change. So I encourage you to follow through, and I appreciate you being here. A master plan, getting that input is the way to go. And finally, I do appreciate you putting spotlight on the process and telling us, you know, how this all came about, and I think a lot of good can come out of this. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service to the city, and if you ever need any background information, I was there. Thanks.
Mayor, council members, residents, my name is Bill Langham. I served over 22 years as an Army Ranger. Upon retirement in 2011, I did high-threat contracting in the Middle East for five years. That really was my passion. My passion was my bike. It was mountain biking. So I'm here because I started a nonprofit called MTB Vets, and we are exclusively for veterans. It's an honor and privilege to continue to serve our veterans as an outlet to seek health, happiness, and a purpose in your community. Mountain biking, we're comrades on wheels, and when we ride, we thrive. #22, on an average, on every day, average of 22 veterans take their lives. It's unacceptable. So what have I, what am I doing? I'm creating trail therapy. As proud veterans and enthusiastic mountain bikers that I've found in Roswell, we firmly believe in trail therapy. The trail challenges the mind, it challenges, it stimulates the soul, and you're riding with companions. Big Creek is my number one trail, where I bring veterans from the VA, from other local establishments, to ride. I also use other trails around greater Atlanta. However, Big Creek, majority of my veterans live in close proximity. I mean, are you aware of the large contingent of veterans that live in your community? V-Atlanta is another nonprofit. Their goal is to make Atlanta the number one destination for veterans. They partnered with Coke, Home Depot, UPS, SunTrust, SMG, and they're bringing them in. Our VA is overwhelmed. I work with mental health. I work with the TBI program to bring those veterans, to give them their trail therapy. And for my success as MTB Vets, if I can save one life, we've been successful. You have many, many veterans here in your community that seek that trail therapy. If you take Big Creek Park away to reconstitute it as something else, I think it's a mistake. We talk about opportunities. As one gentleman talked, this weekend, 850 student athletes are going to descend on Milledgeville along with their family, their moms and dads, their brothers and sisters. Maybe 200 of them live in proximity. Over 600 people need hotel rooms for two nights. They have to eat, they need to prepare or repair their bikes, they need gas. That's a large economic impact in just two days. That can be done here in Roswell. Not once, because we live in the south, we can ride all year round, but we can do development camps. We can bring in the right people. You have a [inaudible] in the rough, and I just ask that you look, look from the outside, look at the big picture, and keep Big Creek Park as it is, not only for bikers, but for people who need that therapy in nature. I mean, I'll just, in on one note, I was riding yesterday with a couple of guys, and lo and behold, where can you go see an eight-point buck right outside of downtown Atlanta, sitting there watching you as you ride your bike? Nowhere but Big Creek Park. Thank you.
Mayor Henry, Mike Palermo, whom we met, and members of the council. My name is Debbie Palding. I live at Pine Valley Subdivision, 9820 La View Circle in Roswell, 30075. And I'm not a mountain biker. I am a walker. I'm a trail runner. I'm a prize-winning photographer, and I'm a writer. I'm a published writer. I've been published a number of times, and I've also written a piece about Big Creek Park that we don't have time to, that I don't have time to read here. However, I would like to tell you what I wrote about. I wrote about how beautiful the park is, whether it's lush and green or brown and parched, depending on what time of year it is. I wrote that it's my solace, it's my place to think and create, it's my way and my time to be by myself, it's cool when the weather's hot because we've got the trees over the park. It's an absolutely wonderful place to just be by yourself, whether you have activities planned or not. I've even asked my husband, who's here, that upon my death, he purchased one of those black lattice benches and dedicated it to my memory. That's how much I love Big Creek Park.
My name is Everett Wilkerson. I'm a resident of Roswell. I moved here from Sandy Springs in 2003. I don't have as many facts and figures as many of these other people have tonight, and I'm impressed by all their research and their statistics, and I support all of their statements. But I also want to say thank you to the council and the city and all the volunteers that helped create recreational areas here in Roswell. I value all of your efforts towards economic development in Roswell, and I appreciate your efforts to help our community stay relevant and competitive within our neighboring cities as this metropolis grows. I also appreciate the challenges that you all face in managing these many complex needs and opinions that our citizens have. I am a mountain biker, and while I'm heavily biased towards the mountain biking, I also represent the community and the families at large that use this park. I've been riding Mansell Road, which it was formerly known as since 1998, and I've seen a lot of the changes come from the Greenway to other areas where they wanted to change the park. And fortunately, they made it into the Greenway with a huge water reclamation area, and that was very fortunate for us. And it became multi-use so other families and other recreational activities could happen there as well. So just to add to the voice, I would like to vote for Big Creek Park. I would like to vote for the park to become permanent so we don't have this type of conversation again. I'd like to vote for more parks to be developed and more mountain bike trails to be developed. And I also would like to vote for you all to continue your wonderful efforts towards economic development. We need it, we want it, but maybe if we could just think of other alternatives to that particular piece of land to continue building other opportunities as well as the tennis community, if we still think that that's a viable economic... community, if we still think that that’s a viable economic opportunity. Thank you very much.
I’m Adam Farhado. I’m a resident of Roswell. I live at 900 Lake Haven Court. My family moved to Roswell, like many of the people who’ve spoken here tonight, to be close to Big Creek Park and to the Greenway. In fact, when we bought our house, being a mile and change from Big Creek was our number-one priority. And I voted for you, Mayor Henry, because I heard you promised to preserve Roswell’s tree canopy during one of your speeches. So, in the news that the tennis court plan broke, I was profoundly dismayed, and it made me, the handling of the incident made me lose a lot of faith in the council. Nevertheless, I think this meeting is a very positive step forward, and I hope for a better future in which Big Creek is protected as a natural park. I hope this, not just for myself, but for my two-year-old son, Heath, who is obsessed right now with only two things: his bike and Thomas the Train. He doesn’t care about, except when I bring him his bike. He loves to ride the pump tracks, and we also spend long hours just wandering the trails. Likes to throw rocks into the creek. I take him to the pump track to ride just about every Saturday, and every time we have to leave, he screams, because he doesn’t want to go. He’s having so much fun. He’s not only in love with Big Creek, because he likes to ride his bike there, but I took him there for the first time, right after he learned to walk, about a month after he took his first steps. So, he grew up walking the trails. He’s growing up walking those trails, and I hope that I can keep taking him to that park for as long as, as long as he and I are both able to walk. Thank you.
Nathan Sears, 735 Crab Orchard Court, live along the Old Alabama Corridor, and the Old Alabama Corridor is changing, and it’s been changing since the master plan for Big Creek Park was adopted 16 years ago. But those changes have hastened in the last few years. Every last parcel of undeveloped land along Old Alabama is now either developed, underdevelopment, or in the process of rezoning or for proposed development in the very near future. With every, every development comes the same thing: the bulldozing and flattening of the hills and tree canopy that characterize Old Alabama Corridor and much of East Roswell and Roswell in general. At every meeting for these developments along the corridor, and frankly, across Roswell, citizens have asked at least two things of our council, mayor, and developers: protect our tree canopy, respect the topography of the land. And every time, the answer has been that this is private land, and owners have certain rights. Develop within the codes, and that they want to pay the fees to cut the trees, build their retention and retaining walls, that they have the rights to do so, and so there’s really nothing that the city or we as residents can do, and we take that. But this time, it’s ours. This time, we don’t have to yield to the rights of private landowners to develop their land. We don’t need millions of dollars to try and buy and save the last parcel of undeveloped land along this corridor. We already did it. Roswell citizens already did it 16 years ago, and they already saved this piece of property. When the master plan was designed and approved, the one constant of every speaker, when you look at the minutes for approval, was to preserve the trees, was to, multiple city council members and the planners themselves noted that this was just a concept, and asked that prior to developing any of the land, that the city seek to reuse existing buildings or find alternative possible sites, and to do everything possible to preserve the topography and preserve the tree canopy of Big Creek Park. The needs of Roswell have changed too since the park master plan. Elected officials have done just what the citizens and city leaders suggested. Roswell has built an aquatic center at Grove Way Community Park. We’ve established art center here at, and rec center here at Roswell, East Roswell Park. We have a gymnastics facility at Roswell Area Park. We’ve added ball fields and passed bond referendums to have them artificially turfed, and we have other options to expand ball fields that not, do not include Big Creek Park. In 2016, our city purchased more than 24 acres off of Chaffman Road for $3.4 million. This is flat, open property that, at the time of purchase, was specifically suggested would be used for ball fields. Sweet Apple Park is wide-open space adjacent to current soccer fields. The city recently tried to raise funds for, to add additional soccer fields, which I do not believe they were able to do. Many of the things in the master plan for this park are simply no longer a priority or have already been built elsewhere. Many of the needs that the city still has would be better suited for other locations that could be implemented at significantly lower cost, both financial and ecological, due to the difficult terrain of Big Creek and its status as the major tributary to the Chattahoochee in Roswell, and would not be done so at the sacrifice of an already flourishing park and amenity. What residents do want is what residents already have: a last stand of green space preserved primarily in its natural state, but still allowing for ample recreation. What the city seems to desire is a regional attraction. The park exists as is today and has become such largely without major involvement or investment from the city, and what I would suggest is let’s work together to enhance what we already have. Instead of losing an amenity or trading one, let’s double down on what makes it great, and let’s give residents what they have been asking for in every survey: more of what we have at Big Creek Park, trails, and nature.
My name is Shane Dender, and I’m currently a resident of Canton, Georgia, and for the previous 37 years of my life, I had grown up, lived in, recreated in, worked in, and watched Roswell grow as a resident of Roswell for those previous 37 years. And Big Creek Park was an important part of my growth as a person. Place where one could get away from the crowds, the noise, and everything else, and just clear the mind. And so, when the announcement was made that they were going to put 100-some-odd tennis courts on Big Creek Trails, where you have massive elevation changes and everything, my first thought was, are these people suffering from an extreme case of cranial rectumitis? I mean, come on now! None of this made any sense. And then, the business plan was, well, rudimentary at best. And in fact, I’m sure some of y’all have seen the episode of South Park with the Underpants Gnomes, where the business plan was, A, collect underpants, somewhere in the middle, everything’s a little fuzzy, and then profit. Well, quite frankly, the Underpants Gnomes had a better business plan than what was discussed and presented by the city council here about this tennis center. And so, quite frankly, it just didn’t make any sense whatsoever. And also, we have the Olympic Center down near Stone Mountain, that, well, was supposed to be a pretty big deal, but it’s being torn down right now. So, you got another strike against you. And so, I’m left wondering, was the council blinded by dollar signs and didn’t think things through clearly? I’m not entirely sure, but quite frankly, converting public resources into use for private means is not something that I find acceptable, and I’m sure many of the people here don’t find it acceptable either. And quite frankly, Mayor Henry, your behavior at the council meeting immediately after that announcement was one that showed complete and utter contempt for the people of Roswell and the surrounding communities, and quite frankly, we noticed, and we don’t appreciate it. And, well, to put it simply, the dynamic here seems to be a little out of bounds, because most of these people here are asking that you keep Big Creek as a passive park and how it currently is. Well, quite frankly, that’s not how it works, as y’all work for us. Quite frankly, we, the people, are not asking for you to keep Big Creek as it is. We are demanding that you keep Big Creek as it is. Put it simply, we are paying attention, and I’m sure you notice quite well that the mountain bike community, the hikers, the nimbus, the tree people, we pay attention, and we get the word out. We have friends, we have family members that live and work in this community and can vote here. And to put it simply, if y’all continue to display contempt for us and our wishes, we will make sure that either in the next vote, you are elected out of office, or if necessary, we will petition for a recall election. So, I’m sorry, but we’re paying attention, and we will get the word out. Thank you very much.
Hi, Mayor Henry and City Council. My name is Jodi Janovich, and I live in Nesbit Lakes, and I am a City of Roswell taxpayer. My concern, I know that we all want our east side of Roswell to be developed and grow, because we have been falling behind the ball, but at the expense of our parks, which are so amazing and just touch people to their heart, I don’t understand, I don’t understand why we’re not using empty space in all these strip malls and all these malls that have been abandoned, which are ample on our side of Roswell, for that development. That’s all. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, citizens of Roswell. My name is Michael Burris. I live at the, in the Wildwood Springs area of Roswell, 1760 Azalea Springs Trail. I’m not a long-term resident here. I’ve been here about 10 years now. I moved from Key Biscayne, Florida, which has a tennis facility that is no longer in use. It went, the citizens of Key Biscayne moved it, and now it’s going to be played at the football stadium in Miami Gardens. The people of Key Biscayne really didn’t like that facility because of the traffic it brought. It did not bring economic development to this small city of Key Biscayne at all. A couple of the hotels benefited, and some of the restaurants, but in general, it was not cost-effective for the city. And I understand that there’s a number of other tennis facilities that have gone by the wayside, one in Stone Mountain, I think one in Rome, Georgia. They’re not highly successful. My background, before I retired here, was an auto partner and a consulting partner with Deloitte and Touche. In the past, I worked for a number of different clients who had sports, the Miami Sports Authority, for instance, built the first Miami Heat Stadium. I was somewhat involved in building the Miami Marlins Stadium. In every one of those cases, I think that the economic feasibility studies were highly optimistic and never quite reached what the consultants said that they would. I saw who you were planning on using for the economic feasibility study. I would suggest, it’s, I don’t know them very well, but I would suggest that you have it reviewed. Not necessarily peer-reviewed, but perhaps have a consulting firm overlook their shoulders while they’re doing the initial estimates and calculations. I moved here to Roswell from Miami, because it was, Miami was overdeveloped, and the thought of moving where there was a lot of trees and a lot of outdoor activities and so forth, and having a lot of diverse activities too, was very much of an attraction for me. But now I drive on 92, and I see a lot of 92 being clear-cut. A lot of those trees that I moved here liking are gone now, so. So, I guess my only word of caution is, if you head with this, with this project and you have a study, please have somebody overlook the feasibility study to make sure that it makes sense for the city, because Key Biscayne, what happened was, it became a drain on the city’s resources, and it increased, it increased our tax rate. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. I love Roswell, by the way.
Hi, and my, well, my name is Tanya, and I actually live in Sandy Springs right now. I used to live in Roswell, and I work in Roswell, like, right down the street from Big Creek. I’ve been going to Big Creek for about eight years now. I run, bike, I have two dogs that I run and walk there. When I first heard the news, I spent, like, that weekend handing out flyers and posted up on street corners and trying to get the word out to the people on what was happening, because I don’t think that they knew, like, what was going on. And I speak on the trees, that the trees don’t have a voice, that we have to be the voice for the trees, and we need to keep our green spaces and keep our trails and build, like, more trails, and just stop tearing down our trees, and that’s all. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Jan Lawrence. I live at 85 Vicry Street, and I have a business at 109 Vicry Street, about 300 feet away. I have the most amazing commute every morning. I set out my front door, I walk for an hour and a half in the forest, and I’m at my desk at nine o’clock, never getting into my car, hardly ever. I love Roswell. I moved out of Buckhead, because it changed. I moved out of Chicago to Atlanta, and I just, I love what you have here. I love the hiking, the biking, the mountain biking, the kayaking. Those are my passions. And I think what’s happening here is, I moved here because of all these great things that were happening. Mayor Jared Wood did some amazing things here. He set up all, he set up that piece of land, which is Vicry Creek, and I feel like you, the current administration, is trying to undo what he had done, and I’m very disappointed in that. I think as stewards of the land, we don’t do mass grading on a hilly topography like this. We look at the land. I’m an architect. I do landscape architecture. We look at what is the best use of that land, not mass grading a hilly area. So, what I want to say is, I think this, this piece of land should stay the way it is. As far as economic development, I understand that. We work with developers all over the country, internationally, and I think, just wait a little bit. There’s a recession coming, Amazon’s taking over more properties, you’re going to have mass bankruptcies on more of these strip shopping centers, which are, I would call them shovel-ready, no grading required, just jackhammer the blacktop. You can put soccer field on there, you can put tennis courts on there, all ready for you. Just maybe two years away. I hope that we can keep Vicry Creek. It’s a fantastic area. I love Roswell. I’ll do everything possible to stay the way it is. Thank you.
Hi, I’m Kim Linden. I live at 1265 Land O’ Lakes Drive. As other people have mentioned, my family also moved here for the green spaces, rivers, parks, trails. We use the parks in all kinds of ways: hiking, kayaking, biking, basketball. My son is a mountain biker, and he’s 13. He’s been one for three years. We meet friends regularly that come down from Cumming and other cities on weekdays to meet at Bee Creek Park. My son is homeschooled, and we meet there during, you know, during the week, when it’s a good opportunity for us to get there. While the kids use the mountain biking trails, the parents are hanging out, walking the trails or using the Greenway. We also use Blankets Creek, but Big Creek is the favorite of the kids, because it has a nice mix of both cross-country and downhill trails, plus the pump track. Some trails in Georgia don’t have all of those components, so that’s one thing that makes Big Creek unique. We live on the west side of Roswell, but we go over to East Roswell for some things that are unique, that, that we don’t have on the west side, or that are unique to metro Atlanta as a whole. I think there’s sometimes just a lack of awareness of what is unique there, and I wanted to mention a couple of examples. One is the Discover Science Center on Old Alabama Road. Dr. Tanya Sheer started that a few years ago. She’s an ocean biologist. She does workshops for homeschool families, Girl Scout troops, classes, camps, after-school programs. She told me recently that she’s looking into setting up a second location. So, she had her Realtor pull up, do an analysis together of where are her customers coming from. She said it was 94 different ZIP codes coming to East Roswell for this science center program. But I think a lot of people just aren’t even aware of it, and I’m not sure if it’s on the radar of the council and the mayor. Another unique program in East Roswell that’s new is the Chess Club and Scholastic Center of Atlanta. Both of those are programs that attract homeschool families, Boy Scouts, Girl Scout troops all over Atlanta coming here, because it’s, there aren’t very many of those. You don’t find it in East Cobb, you don’t find it other places, but it’s here in East Roswell. So, my question is, why can’t we... So my question is, why can't we support and help market some of these small businesses that are bringing people in? Sometimes we feel like there has to be a big, huge development to revitalize east Roswell. But when you look at Canton Street and what has happened over the past decade there, it was small incremental changes over time. When I moved to Roswell, there was one restaurant, now there's, I don't know how many. But things change and it evolved in a more organic way. So I don't think we always have to have a big, huge development to bring people in. But we could do things to support some of these unique programs and, you know, help them be marketed so that they can, you know, grow as well. When I look at this survey of, you know, what people want in the recreation department, I see a lot of things on here that we already have. One is gymnasiums. My son's a basketball player, so we use the gyms. But Roswell has at least, I don't know, eight, nine gyms. I mean, there's two at this park, there's two at Roswell Park, two at Henry Park, there's a couple more around. So, but the one thing on this list, we only have one of, is the mountain biking trails. We have indoor swimming facilities, outdoor tennis courts and everything else. So I just want us to keep what is unique and also, as others have mentioned, when I, when we go to Big Creek Park or Old Mill Park, we feel like we're in the mountains of North Carolina. It's one of the few places you can go and feel like you're getting away from the stress of life and the stress of cities. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dale Nesbit and I'm not currently a resident of Roswell. However, I grew up on, at 950 Nesbit Ferry Road and I won't tell you how many years I was there, but to give you an indication of it, I learned to ride a horse on Holcomb Ridge Road. Okay? So we'll leave it at that. I'm going to try to go in between the different issues because I'm going to take the mayor to word. I've known her for a while and if she says that Big Creek being used as a tennis facility is off the table, then I take her to word, it's off the table. So I'm going to change a little bit to what some of the unintended consequences that I saw that might have come about. So I take that as God knocking us on the head and saying, man, I'm going to give you a redo. I'm going to give you a chance to get it right. And why should we even care if we get it right? Because this is Roswell. When I talk to people, and I come from the hinterlands now, I'm out in the side of town where if a limb falls off a tree, you better be able to prove that it fell off the tree because if they think you cut it, you're in trouble. That's where I tell people I stay. I lived in Roswell. The destination point, Big Creek Park, the destination, it already was a destination point. For most people, it was called H-O-M-E. Okay? Now, what I want to talk about the unintended consequences were, is let's say this thing was fabulously successful and it did everything everybody thought it could do. Do you know what it would have done to Old Alabama Road? There's right-of-way for at least the four lane of the Old Alabama Extension next to Willow Springs. The Georgia DOT has for years wanted the four lane and every time they wanted the four lane, the citizens of Roswell stood up and said, no, we're good, two lanes, give me a suicide lane in the middle and I'll take my chances, but don't make it four lanes. That would have been the unintended consequence that would have happened. If this was a developer of tennis facilities coming to you and saying, I want to build it here, and the city didn't own the land, there's no way you would have thought about it. Because all of the different departments of Roswell would have given you that background. Okay? The gentleman's talking about what's going on in commercial real estate and everything, he's right on, listen to him, he's a good guy, use him as a consultant, he knows what he's talking. Because it's coming, folks. Now whether it's going to be two years or no, I don't know. Okay? Be very, very careful if you enter into an agreement on a tennis facility. I'm a tennis player. I don't look like it, I know. But that's how I made my way through college. I was a collegiate player and was a tennis pro until I worked, I jumped out of a perfectly good airplane. All right? I love clay courts. Clay courts are great. But if you look at where the clay court championships are held and everything, none of them have more than 12 courts. And in order to make a facility the size that they were looking at run and go, you would have had to have that thing programmed from six o'clock in the morning until late at night. And when I looked at the memorandum of, of understanding, the things that jumped out at me that caused me to, there wasn't, the citizens of Roswell shouldn't pay one freaking dime to use that facility. Okay? Not the people who were going to, let's see if I can remember how you said it. I get to name it, I get to develop it, I get to own it and I get to control it for a nominal fee. That doesn't sound like a joint use to me. This type of, of facility, in my opinion, you've got, you've got some smart people sitting here with Roswell Inc. I've known Steve for a long time. I'll wrap it up real quick. But this, we've had tennis facilities in Georgia fail. Anybody know Peachtree World of Tennis? It still exists. It's over there kind of down around where the USTA's got a office on the other side of the river. Okay? But they dropped the world because the world doesn't come to it anymore. It was a big thing when Billie Jean King and the rest of them would come. But you have to be very, very careful with the way that you go about setting these things up. And if somebody wants to come, this is Roswell. Roswell can demand and work with people in a business way. And you can have a tennis facility, but you need to, to look at it as what it is. It has to be a commercial venture for you to be able to offset the thing.
My name is Terry Palmary. I'm the Associate Region Director for the Southern Off-Road Bicycle Association, better known as SOARBA, and the International Mountain Bicycling Association, better known as IMBA. I live in Elahay, Georgia, and my job is to support our 44 chapters across seven southeastern states. So I'm here hopefully to set a reset button here and open up a dialogue between the Rambo Chapter, which is one of our chapters, and the City of Roswell to really discuss mountain biking and what it means to the community. And it's not just mountain biking. As you can see, these trails offer access to, to nature, to the outdoors for other folks, walkers, runners. And also, it's, it's involving our kids in outdoor activity. There's a lot of information that I can pass on to you, although I'll tell you what, your speakers here did a really good job. But I would like to respectfully request a meeting sometime in the future to discuss mountain biking and what it brings to the community. In my capacity, I have the privilege of seeing what mountain biking brings to communities, to cities, to states, to counties, all across the country, all across the world. I know about a lot of development that's going on. I've had the privilege of helping communities develop mountain bike trails. There's, there's more to it and it's going to take some time. So I would respectfully request a future meeting. Thank you very much.
My name's Luke Miles. I just wanted to say something real quick. Yes? Oh, not close enough. Sorry about that. My name's Luke Miles, just wanted to say something real quick. 1996, I got out of the Navy, came home overweight, not really happy, and I met a friend who introduced me to mountain biking. And Big Creek was where I learned to ride bikes. It's where I've been riding bikes since 1996. It has kind of redefined who I am as a person, my businesses, my travels and everything. It's a, it's a very important place to me and obviously a lot of other people. The biggest thing, the gentleman that came and talked about veterans, I'm not going to harp on veterans or anything, but it was a very important thing for me to come in, coming from that kind of environment, to be able to escape everything and go to the woods and just be quiet in my own head and ride a bicycle. And I still do that about three to four times a week currently. So it's a, it's a very important place for a lot of people to escape the city, to get away from the noise, get away from all that and be able to be around nature. You know, I, I've traveled as far as New Zealand to ride a mountain bike. I just came back from Utah for a month in Park City and Moab riding a mountain bike. And all of that came from Big Creek. It all started there for me and I'd like for it to continue to be there for me and everybody else. So just wanted to say, you know, I'm glad that we were able to take it from just land that we used to just kind of, I guess you'd say poach on and go ride our bicycles in the woods to developing a park, thanks to you guys. I'd just like to keep it that way. It's fantastic. We love it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bruce Crawford. I live in Long Point, I guess in Johns Creek. But first, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for quickly and responding to the pouring of community upset when we first, the agenda item and taking it off the agenda. There's a lot of times anymore, people protest and nothing seems to happen and at least y'all recognized the mistake and took it off the agenda. Thank you for that. Second, I'd like to thank Sean Bruner for everything that he's done in the community and his bicycle shop and also for helping to make sure that all of us in the biking community understand what is happening very quickly. I'd like to make two points. One, I stand before you not just for myself, but representing three generations. I have my two daughters in the Atlanta area, one who lives very close, who enjoy the park. And a third generation, my six-year-old grandson. You know, we're all adults. I think sometimes we forget the sheer joy of a six-year-old boy who had the opportunity to ride on hills and, you know, really have a lot of fun and an outdoor experience. This little six-year-old boy that has no problem riding 18 miles, I don't understand him, but he loves something that is frankly, unique and irreplaceable. The second point I'd like to make is that in my travels, I've lived in eight different states in our fine country. And, and only one of the locations where I lived was there anything close to Big Creek. And even that wasn't what y'all have here. It is a, a unique site. It is irreplaceable. We have enough concrete and buildings and, you know, private members-only clubs. I say, listen to the voice of the community, make it permanent and let's not have to worry about this and make it better and let's not have to worry about this in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Tony Arrieta, I live in Roswell in Creekview Lane, right by the mill. And, you know, I was sitting in the back and I, I wasn't going to share anything, but I've just kind of been taking notes and pretty amazing evening. Thank you for hosting us and thank you for allowing this, this forum for us to share our thoughts. Protecting wetlands, veteran rehab, kid mountain biking teams and coaches, developing those teams, families moving to the area because of the parks, photographers and writers inspired by the beauty of power coffers, mountain bike advocacy groups growing the sport in the area around us, homeowners decided to move to Roswell because of the park, business owners that started businesses that grow their families because of the park. I think you've heard us. I think you can hear all of us loud and clear. Now we want to hear you. Through the process of this, I stopped counting after about two dozen or three dozen questions. And I encourage you to please look at the minutes, look at the video and engage with us. The same kind of passion that you felt, that you heard tonight from all of us and how we thought this was handled, we want to ally with you. We want to kind of, let's engage together productively on how we can move forward with making this place, the place that obviously everybody loves so much. And those work together to do it. We're on your side. And I just encourage the council members and I thank you for your opportunity to, to share this with you.
I would like to thank you all again for coming out this evening and sharing your thoughts, your concerns, your questions with us. We are listening, we will continue to listen, and I urge you all to please visit our website. We'll have follow-up information on our website. And also, you will notice that the public process will be beefed up on our website as we go forward. So thank you again for coming out tonight and y'all have a safe, happy evening. Good night.